We all good?
We're just going live, so just to pause for a moment. Well, I don't know how long that takes, couple of seconds, I think.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. I would like to call this policy and curriculum meeting to order, and this evening we're going to start with the curriculum portion. And Dr. Quinn?
You know, I just saw that I need to have screen sharing rights here because it's been disabled. But while we're getting that done, I'm here tonight to share with you some updates about what has been happening across the district since our last update, which was November, in terms of our equity work. Let me see here. All right. Okay. And when I last updated the board, I had detailed some of the activities that have been happening since the beginning of the school year, really kind of dating back to July or even spring of, gosh, was it 2020? Who knows, 2019? I think it was 2020. Since that time, several groups have been mobilizing in different pockets of the district. And so my goal here is just to provide you with a brief overview of the different activities, professional development, communications that occurred around the topic of equity. So we're going to go back to the November, December timeframe. In November, we had several professional development opportunities, but more so working on communication. So I'll start with professional development. The secondary ELA department and Dr. Boyer, our high school librarian, attended a webinar called Challenging the Classics. I'm just going to advance this slide. This is one of the slides from that session. And it was really around examining our curriculum materials, examining the texts that our students are reading and engaging in conversation around to, to think about, all right, who is represented in these texts? Who is not represented in these texts and making sure that as we are deciding upon those core texts, we're doing so through an equity lens. And this webinar really kind of started a conversation that has been ongoing among the Language Arts Department and which will continue throughout the summer around examining our curriculum, our curriculum assets to ensure that we have, we are representing our student body and representing the world in our materials and in our curriculum. So that was sort of the starting point for a conversation that's going to be continuing throughout the year. In December, November, December, we had our equity goals presented to the board and approved. And again, just as a brief overview, our goals were to provide professional development, develop committee structure for diversity, equity and inclusion, to look at our hiring practices as well as to come forward with a communication plan to share information to student staff and the community. I didn't know if, well, we'll be hitting the recruiting bullet point there in just a few moments. But those were the goals that were presented and approved to the board. It was in November that our district equity team began their communications. Now, this particular goal came forward after we conducted an equity audit in August. And one of the things that our audit demonstrated is that we need aware, general more awareness amongst our school community as well as information and professional development. So the equity team has been working really hard to put together newsletter articles, announcements in the schools that are appropriate for the grade level, as well as sending resources to teachers so they can tie in with curricular discussions and whatnot as possible. So the first theme in November was Native Americans. In December, their theme was dominant culture. And what they have been doing is having different members of the equity, equity team write the newsletter articles and publishing in our community newsletter. Our middle school librarian, Mr. Hopper, working on expanding our collection of diverse texts. And we have also been much more forward about engaging an interpreter to work with our parents and families when we have parent communications, such as our parent teacher conferences in November. In January, the equity teams communicate, the equity team communication theme was identity. Of course, the board approved the new course proposal of construction of race and systems of identity. We engaged with our Berks County IU to have additional professional development on supporting English language learners. And this was sort of a two-part series. In this particular session, we had teachers, mostly secondary teachers, learn some various ways to scaffold and support instruction for English language learners. And teachers developed lesson plans as a result. And so that's been an ongoing effort that continued into February. Again, we've been working with Misshauna King throughout the year. Our equity team had a workshop with her. I'm sorry, that should say our administrative team had a workshop with her on leading for equity. And we also had some additional webinars such as racial literacy as lessons for voice in voice for educators, parents and students. And on our technology side, we're also ensuring, looking at our equity of access. And so it was in January that we deployed one-to-one devices for all of our students to take home, which turned out to be such a great thing, considering the number of snow days we had this year. February, the equity team communication theme was microaggressions. We began a several-part series on additional webinars. One was Penn Study Council. That was called Equity Journeys. We put a small team together to join in with the Delaware Valley Consortium for Excellence and Equity on the topic of belonging and dignity. And that series of workshops came along at the, at a great time because our high school equity team has been talking about that concept of dignity in ways that students feel it's been upheld and respected and ways in which maybe it hasn't. And so they're, they've been collecting stories from students and looking at those stories and trying to determine what patterns and themes they see and, you know, trying to understand each other's really lived experiences. The equity team had a webinar from Facing History in Ourselves about teaching Black History Month throughout the year. And on another front, we have been publishing monthly enrollment reports to the board. We removed gender from those reports as it was not necessarily additional information that was necessary. In March, the admin team again met with Misshauna King on culturally responsive leadership. We had another professional development session with Danny Hedinger from the Berks IU, supporting English language learners. Our high school equity team had another meeting where they invited more participants to join in with the, the goal of really understanding our students' experiences. So they shared some of those stories anonymously and discussed what they're hearing and seeing. March was a big month for the equity team as their website was published. This website has been a project of a high school intern. Hold on a second. I'm going to go over here for it. And you can find it from our district webpage under Equity Team Website. This has been a project of Elizabeth Orsham, as she's worked as a student intern with our equity team. And the purpose of the website is again to share information to parents, to families, you'll see, for students, for teachers. And they're also in this particular website archiving all those articles that they've been sharing through our Cooper Prints Community Newsletter. So I really would like to thank Elizabeth and the equity team for putting together this amazing set of resources. It's been a, a goal since the beginning and they're going to continue to keep this updated and share information with the community. Also in March, in order to address our issues of looking at increasing the diversity of our staff, Mr. Tim Chatton and Dr. Lever participated in a session on investing in change. I don't know if Mr. Tim Chatton or Dr. Lever wanted to say a few words about that?
Yeah, we were invited to participate by the group link through a community member, Scott Blair, who is the Associate Vice President for Diversity, Equity and Inclusion at the Sales University, just someone that parent in the community and invited us to participate. The topics were pretty wide-ranging, obviously, and, you know, the, all that goes into recruiting and hiring, you know, some of, some of the most obvious things, cast a wide net and stuff, but also selling your community and the opportunities that it provides for all types of employees to be members of that community. And to ensure that you're specifically cultural companies. You know, in addition to making sure the literature that goes out, advertising position communicates that you are prioritizing for an inclusive hiring process. So it was good. It was definitely good for us to look and evaluate our processes. You know, one of the notice on an event like that is that we're all kind of in the same boat to recruit a diverse pool of candidates for, you know, specifically teaching students and that that's it's a struggle in Pennsylvania right now, you know, simply because of a lack of diversity in the candidate pool that's going into the universities. You know, the universities are doing the same thing, trying to recruit diverse pull into their program prep programs, but making sure that do everything we can as a school community to increase those opportunities, you know, one of, that I think is a classic example of it is defining fit. You know, a lot of people put into their hiring process, they fit, fit me, you know, does fit just mean that you fit into this group in a sense that means you're similar and could be to sort of an imagination of the group or is fit? What do you really mean by fit? Does it mean team player? Does it mean that, you know, does it mean that you have a similar philosophy? We can, you can have questions in reading skills that identify that stuff without calling it fit because fit can be misconstrued by different people on the team. So I mean, that's a good reflective piece that as well goes along with that. So we're appreciative to be invited and really found it helpful and valuable practices.
Thank you, Mr. Tim Chatton. And finally into April, the monthly theme in April will be white privilege. The team is working on a newsletter article to go out soon. On our district admin team will be finalizing our book study of culturally responsive teaching in the brain. And at the same time, another 12 teachers have started a book study on culturally responsive teaching in the brain. So that's really exciting. And our high school equity team is continuing to meet to again, understand themselves and understand our students' experiences and they're working towards trying to create a student ambassador program for next school year because we know that one way we can really advance equity and inclusiveness is by engaging students in the work because peers will look up to and work with peers and, and in a way that's different than teachers telling. So that's sort of their next area. And a lot of things will be coming forth this summer and professional development opportunities around equity. So I just wanted again to do that quick overview. A lot of things happening behind the scenes in different pockets of the district, different groupings, but we feel good about our journey and we know it is certainly going to be a journey, but.
In addition, you know, I will add, it's not, I don't know what month he officially put the action, but as we addressed in the budget meeting last month, a few weeks ago, you know, looking to increase our staffing at, for our English language learners to reduce that caseload for next year and beyond, as we see the growing number, it just allows, you know, greater supports for both teachers and students and families, I guess, from all three, really. Just like anytime you do when you increase, when you decrease the student to staff ratio number, you know, so that's really important. And being conversations that we have, we had a conversation, a meeting last week, you know, about identify, what data can we pull about families that students identified as English language learners, but the home language is non-English? And what kind of data can we pull about access for those students and those families? Because that's a different category, you know, it's when the student is identified as ELL. Again, there's that case management that comes with being in the, in the ELL program versus how we communicate with families that the home language is not English, but the student is not identified. So just all different ways we can see it. And there's, there's some holes we could, maybe we would not be kind of so keen to see if we weren't having all these conversations about it. So.
All right. And that's my report. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I'm really pleased to be part of this work. It's good work. It's hard work. But we are moving forward.
Thank you very much, Dr. Quinn, for that comprehensive update. And I think maybe somebody was trying to ask a question.
That would be me. First of all, yeah, I want to, I applaud the, the effort and, and this is obviously important. I think it's a great way to get our students ready for the future job market and everything, especially given the demographics of our, our district. I think Mr. Tim Chatton pointed out something that we are hiring additional ELL staff. Is that, do I remember that right?
Sort of, yes. We are assigning staff. We were signing staff differently to provide more staffing for ELL, correct?
Okay. I guess just, just out of curiosity, is this, is this to respond to changes that are occurring in our district? Or is it to increase diversity awareness among our district community and the, and the students?
It's to respond to changing demographics, but so I'll say it's a little bit of both, you know, so it's, well, it's responding to demographics because as we see that rise in our English language learner population, we last year, you know, we're at a point where with 1.4 teachers, and that was, we used some existing staff and available, an available period. We would could stay at about the county average for ELL students per teacher. With our continuing increasing enrollment by going, instead of going by increments like that before 1.6, 1.8, going right to 2.0. You know, we've again reduced that well below the average and assuming relative steady progress or growth for the next year. But also then allowing, where that's going to help us more is the collaboration with teachers because helping, you know, with a growing population comes the lack of experience necessarily with working with various levels of ELL students at the same time, potentially, you know, because it's, it goes in. Most of our ELL students are Spanish-speaking native. But you could have various levels of proficiency within and then, and then you have different levels of proficiency within different content areas. So it's just, it gets granularly more complicated at times. So providing additional support will allow us to provide greater access to all those students now into the future by ramping up skills that way. So it's, it's really not about awareness, but it's about skillset and support for students and families.
Thank you.
Anything else for Dr. Quinn?
No, thank you for the opportunity to share this great work.
All right. Thanks again. And with that, we can move into the policy portion of our meeting. And I guess Lever will be helping us with that. We're going to go back to policy 123 again.
Yeah, let's start with policy 123. This was 2009, policy last reviewed in 2009. We, at our last meeting, there were some suggested changes. And so let me, let me point those out on the second page under delegation of responsibility. The language is now, the superintendent shall ensure that similar athletic programs are offered in compliance with Title IX proportion to the district's enrollment is, is what was the suggested change. Under guidelines, the title would read interscholastic athletic opportunities. And then that first sentence under guidelines, in the last, the last line, the deletion of male and female secondary school students, and it just reads athletic opportunities and treatment for secondary school students for the preceding school year. And then in the citations at the end, striking policy 103. So that was where we were last month.
Okay, great. Thank you for those updates. That satisfies the majority of the concerns I had. I know last Dr. Darian brought up some concerns with, I guess it's at the top of the second page where it says off-campus activities. And I looked at that a little bit more south. And I see that that language is basically taken from policy 218, which is student discipline. So I share many of his concerns, but I also just wonder how just for congruity within the policy, the beginning of that under off-campus activities, it says, this policy shall also apply to student conduct that occurs off school property, et cetera. And in policy 218, it is clear that this policy is referring to the beginning of policy 218, which deals with student discipline and then is continuing there. But as you read through this policy number 123, it's not really clear what that refers back to. So, you know, prior to that, we say the board directs that no student may participate in interscholastic athletics who has not done one through six, come to school, et cetera. But then the next thing we say is this policy shall also apply, this policy that says no students may participate if they have not done these things. Do you see what I'm saying? Anybody? So that's, that's kind of number one, but number two is it is taken directly from policy 218, which governs all students. So does it have to be here too?
I, I mean, I personally believe there's value in having it both places as long as it is interpreting the same way, you know, you're right or wrong, your most heavily contested decisions of discipline in schools are often due to us versus academics. One, because they're a little less clear-cut, you know, in what you, what the jurisdiction is. Because it gets into all these details of what were the coaches' rules, what were the departments' rules, the schools' rules, like it all kind of falls in this avalanche down. But also just because that's what people tend to get up in arms about, quite honestly, is that, you know, when somebody's being excluded. I think half places, you know, for the consistency of ensuring that if there is a interscholastic athletics disciplinary issue code of conduct issue, you can go right to that policy. So referencing back to another one, I think it is beneficial now, allow, it keeps it a little bit tighter. But I think that's why PSBA recommends that. I see that a lot in PSBA recommendations. It's kind of repetitive nature of that. We repeat one, we reference an old policy and we repeat ourselves in the new one.
Right. And I totally understand that, not having to read for back a separate policy when you definitely do want to include that. I would like to say something, I mean, I can see that the reference is there, it goes back to policy 218, but I would like the language to make sense.
I mean, I personally didn't have a problem with the language to begin with. Having said that, I do appreciate the concern that Dr. Darian had expressed with regard to this change in the policy language. I think have to be careful just to make sure that the students that might need the most aren't somehow given a heavy hand and excluded from participating. So I'm just wondering what we could do to make sure that those concerns of Dr. Darian are addressed while we can still maintain the language because I mean, it's important to have that language in there because it's to authorize the administration to act in certain instances where right now the policy to be a little bit murky as to whether we could act. So I, I think we do need these changes, but at the same time, I was just wondering if there is a way we can give some assurance as to the concerns expressed by Dr. Darian.
So I also understand Dr. Darian's concerns. However, we do have policy two, which is student discipline, which refers to all students. So we already have those expectations that are there of all students in an approved policy. Now, if we go back at some point, we will be reviewing that. But if we don't agree that this should be expected of our, all of our students, that's a whole nother issue. But now let me just double check here. There are six things listed here, whereas there are only five in policy 218. I guess number six is the one that is chiefly different. Just in a different order.
It was a little bit different.
Yeah. So number two is the same, number three is the same, number four, there is that bolded additional language is not completely different from what we already had in 218. Five is the same. So then six, one in policy 218 is the same as six here. So one in 123. That's, we mentioned that somewhere too, though. It's the traveling time. Oh, that's in a far, that's under authority in policy 218 rather in the, rather than in the enumerated off-campus activities. Yeah. If this is involved in conduct that, that would be evaluating their interscholastic activities, to your point, 218 would apply as well. And if they're in interscholastic or not subject to whatever disciplinary action is appropriate from 218. But that would be my understanding, yes.
So for those students, I absolutely understand Dr. Darian's point with, right, some of these could need that extracurricular activity. But that, that is a privilege that's extended to them. It's not like, it's not as if they are that they're given the opportunity to participate, but it's not a given. And so if I would assume 218, I'm sorry, I don't know that one without looking at it, but I would assume 218 would restrict participation in activities at school depending upon the level of disciplinary action needed, right?
And not, not explicitly, but it's really just, you know, 218 gives us, gives the administration the authority to come up with the administrative regulation, which ultimately this regard ends up being code of conduct, right? That, that, you know, gives authority, it gives the authority to the code of conduct. The interscholastic activities, you know, is more kind of explicitly giving the authority to the athletics code of conduct. You know, and that's the, from, there's a theoretical standpoint where I agree with everything Dr. Darian's saying, but it comes down to implementation where it's a simple, the simplest example that on the kind of easier side to me is no matter how much a student is failing, you're always entitled to education and they should always be entitled to an education because that's a right that they have. no matter how much a student is failing, you're always entitled to education and they should always be entitled to an education because that's a right that they have. But if a student is failing, they're not entitled to play athletics, right? Or participate in the band or participate in theater. They lose that right. It's because it's not right. It's a privilege you have by complying with X, Y, and Z, you know, so we already do it by, by the means of that, of dynamics. Therefore, through behavior, discipline, conduct, you know, it's just extending principle. It's already being enacted through academics.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I see that. And I, I also understand Dr. Darian's concerns. But I, I also kind of look at it as, you know, sort of rights and responsibilities and you know, with the, with the right of the student athlete to participate in activity and to represent the school in, you know, interscholastic competition comes, I think, with certain responsibilities as well. And, and I, and that while we all, I think, agree that extracurricular activities can, you know, play an integral part in the educational process, I think, you know, generally speaking, or, you know, sort of our community, our families, you know, most people still see it more as a privilege than as, you know, sort of integral to that process. And, and we even, as you just mentioned, you know, still see it as, as a privilege as well in certain regards. So you know, I think we have to just be careful not to, you know, you know, to, to sort of be consistent with that philosophy as we're looking at the policy.
So I kind, I, I feel as though since 218 already exists and addresses those things for all of our students. Things that Dr. Darian said about we should remove this and put it in a policy to apply to all students. That's not really a relevant point since we have that already. My, my kind of is perhaps at the beginning, the off-campus activities right there, we should say, not necessarily say as a restatement, but maybe as a restatement of our policy 218 student discipline, the following are also made a part of the expectations of this policy or something. And then it's not singling out athletes and it's just the expectations that we already have an agreed upon policy for.
Something like this policy, comma, in conjunction with policy 218, comma, shall student conduct that occurs, is it, is a change that simple? Or is that not, not complex enough?
Wow. I, I still have an issue with what does that refer back to this policy?
This, this policy is to 123.
Right. This policy incorporates the expectation included in our student discipline policy as follows. Maybe something to the effect of this policy is to be considered in conjunction with policy 218 in the matters of student conduct. Sure.
Say that again. What's the harm of, what's the harm of, I'm just trying to understand your objection to restating the sort of the essence of 218 here is?
No, I'm fine with restating the essence of 218. What want is to say it's what we're doing here so that it doesn't seem like we're calling out only athletes. If somebody isn't familiar with 218 and where it says this policy, it is referring to 218 linguistically. So I would like to specify that.
In number six, it says board directs that no student may participate in interscholastic athletics who has not. This one through six, number six is adhere to applicable discipline standards. Then it references the footnote that refers you to policy 218. So.
Yes, I, I agree that this is accurate.
To I would say the way it reads it already does that, but if you really wanted to make it clear, just as that section to say, since it already references to 18 there. And just say
I, I think it helps.
Adhere to applicable discipline standards as set forth in policy 218. Since it's already citing it there. Again, I would be careful not to water down certain language. We, we don't want to weaken the ability of the administration to act in certain circumstances where some type of response may be required.
I'm really not asking to remove any of the language. I'm hoping to address Dr. Darian's concerns that this appears in if you're only looking at this policy to call out the behavior of athletes only.
I don't believe there's a substantive change in what you're suggesting. It's just about how we want to present the language in the policy. If it were to be picked up alone, if this policy were to be laying on a table and someone picked it up, they, what would they read? And they would have, it would tell them, oh, 218 already says this. But that's, you know, that without reading the references, I think. So I don't, I mean substantively, I don't think it takes anything away from the ability of administration to implement programs.
I'll, I'll try again. This policy, comma, support policy 218, comma, shall apply to student conduct that occurs off school property. Et cetera. So under off-campus activities in this policy, we would just insert in support, supported by or with reference to policy 218. Along with policy 218.
As defined in policy 218. And I mean, that helps. I, I would say go with that and see if that helps Dr. Darian.
All right. So here's, so here's what I have on the, under off-campus activities. This is a policy, this policy, comma, as supported by policy 218, shall also apply to student conduct that occurs off school property and would otherwise violate the student code of conduct, code of student conduct in the following, if any of the following circumstances exist. Can we take a look at that? Next one.
We can always. I mean, I'm, I'm fine to attending at that point if the committee supports it and we can always.
A non-substantive change, especially any change to be made after first reading or non-substantive change.
Right. So. So all in favor of moving this for first reading? Any opposed?
Okay, we just have Dr. Johnson online.
I see, I see a hand up for in favor. So we've got a couple meetings out of that.
Thank you.
It's only a quarter of a year.
All right, are we ready for 123.2? A, a little, a little so, so 123.2 there, the, I guess the attorneys at PSBA have just language, language about electrocardiogram testing and it appears there's, there's also a, I'm sure there's a guidance somewhere in the athletic realm that we should be handing out information to parents about EKG testing during the course of the kind of the preseason and also talks about penalties for coaches that aren't following at the end of the so first, second, and a third violation if coaches are not following.
Any questions or concerns on this policy?
Let's not lose momentum.
All right, seeing none, all in order of moving this for first reading. Can't really see, oh, yes. Okay. Moving right along.
Good. Three, two, working periods is not a policy that we currently have. But the changes are really driven by the, the current environment that we're in, where we are having to change calendars and change work environments, thinking of virtual days, those, and, and so be I, I'm not sure that we would have, have thought that we needed this previously, but Christian and I both thought we probably should put it before the board because we, we do still find ourselves in this place where we're having to change the kind of the, what the day looks like and would be, it would be good if that were supported by board policy. I know we've had some emergency powers and so PSBA is, is kind of catching up. It seems like we're at the tail end of it, but I wouldn't be surprised if in the next years we ran into something and they use some similar some services to deal with, you know, a, an illness that was statewide or nationwide. Under the, at the, towards the bottom delegation of responsibility, so this may be assigned extra. We would, we would allocate that to the building principal. That's an option from PSBA and we would, we would select building principal for for that, that assigned, assigning duties. If you read the bold section, that's really that's really the reason we would do this. It, it states that we're, we have to follow our contract. You know, we don't, we're not able to undo anything that's been, you know, bargained by the bargaining unit. References are health and safety plan.
Any questions or concerns on this? All right, all in favor of moving policy 332 for first reading? Right. Yeah.
Yes, and policy 803. I'll just hold to see the old policy 803. It's about eight lines. There's not very much there and you can see that there is an off that is added. It is truly reflective of all of the things that we've been doing. And so it gives the board powers in the, in the well, start with authority. Has to do with instructional days. And minimum number of days. Down in the second, the, the, the large paragraph, when an emergency arises, which the board could not anticipate or foresee. So it's again, it's putting in board policy, many of the things that we've had to do to navigate this. I don't, I don't see us doing it really outside of an emergency that, that would kind of transcend just our district. And I think that's, that's what the language indicates.
One thing that I will, you know, when you look at that temporary provisions established, and of course law may include, now limited to implementing remote or alternate methods of delivering instruction in a direction of certified school employees. Sometime over the next few months, we will bring before the board the application for FID days, which FID is the flexible instructional days. The state had implemented those as potential districts could apply for up to five. I think it was pilot year was now three years ago, then it was one year of operation. And then it was this year, which they were kind of made irrelevant. As of right now, they're still requiring us to apply for those for next year if we're looking to apply for any, for like these virtual snow days potentially. I think that's going to be waived at some point because it becomes sort of antiquated, but nothing has been done on state level. So we will still complete the fit application. You know, so in theory, you know, we are sort of approving at that point. So that would go before the board and then go to the state. We'd be approving alternate methods of delivery instruction. Again, I think some of that antiquated, even that there's cyber schools running all over the world, you know, and have been. But yet specific to Pennsylvania brick and mortar schools, we would have to apply for that fit process currently. So some of that fits into here, although I think that will change over the next few months. Nonetheless, we'll apply within the timeline, which is a little bit shorter than how government works. State government, not local government like us.
So I think this policy really is very much in the spirit of, I don't know if you remember way back at the beginning of the pandemic, we had to approve a continuity of education plan. How we were going to continue to provide education. I think probably the summary to describe what this does is it, it kind of codifies that within our local jurisdiction of how we are going to education in the face of an emergency. And it, it gives us some degree of flexibility with calendar and, and, you know, because our teachers will, our teachers tell us consistently when we go to a virtual day, particularly we hear it from the elementary, especially in the primary, that they do not need to be on screens for seven hours to, to, to get what they need to get in that environment. And so some adjustment of schedules, they, they really, as we've worked our way through this, they've not really felt that they could do that. And, and have learned along the way that it, it's really a challenge for kids to do it. So this kind of codifies that continuity of education that we had originally submitted to the state way back in, gosh, I don't remember when we did that, Christian. Yeah.
That was back in spring.
Yeah, in March.
Yeah.
Right. So any questions? So any questions? Is this something? It's, it's quite a mention of the old policy, but I do think we have certainly needed it this year.
Any questions on policy 80? Seeing none, all in favor for first reading?
Good. Policy 803 is very similar. In fact, the, the changes, it's, it's just specific to the calendar. But it's a name language around when an emergency arises, temporary provisions. And actually, it's, it's pure image. I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. We're into school visitors. I had multiple copies. Policy 907, school visitors. Also a fairly significant change. We go from about a half a page in school visitors to multiple references to health and safety plans and people being well, and, you know, who has access to our schools. Naturally, we all hope that at some point here in the future, our schools are more open. But this is the language around what we've been managing. And if, if people are ill, us giving ourselves the ability to make those types of judgments. Some of the things have been, have been in place online. If you look about three quarters of the way down this page, only one designated entrance is monitored and incapable of controlling the tree. That's been a practice for probably a decade in our schools. That's not, it's a policy that has not really been updated, but they are doing it now in light of the pandemic.
Well, I had a question about the one sentence, no visitor making fire with a student in school without the approval of the building principal. So what does that mean? Does that mean I can't say hi to the cute little kid in the hallway or what?
I would, I would not interpret that as conferring. You know, that's, that's pleasantries to me, but I mean, again, that comes down to interpretation of it. You know, I, I see that, to me, that's like a no brainer, like no visitor gets to meet a student unless you don't have the principal in charge. But again, if you want to interpret it very broadly and say you can't say hello, that's, that's ridiculous. That's just not a friendly school environment. So to me, that just means, I interpret that as meaning that no visitor holding meeting with a student without the approval of the building principal, which prior to this policy, safety practices in place, you know, just basic control over your building, you know, all of our principals are very much, you know, any of our safety practices for the last 20 years really have made this an expectation, not a new policy or anything related to COVID. So.
So when I was working with parent volunteers in the, in the elementary school as part of the parent organization, you know, we talked about obviously those, the kinds of issues that you can't be in a room with during, without a teacher, things like that. So, and obviously that makes sense and I understand that, but might. Prefer to have something little. A little more specific like that. So it's a little less open to interpretation.
Well, this is, it's, it's, this is probably written more for agencies, organizations, the police that, that come into a building. And it really is. In, in the world that we're in today, we, because of compulsory education laws, children have to be in the school. And because of that, there has to be some extraordinary effort that is made to make sure that people don't have access to them. And so that's where the principal is usually given the authority to grant or deny that anybody has access to someone's child. When they're, when they're not from within the school. And so I, I, I don't really see it as an issue with volunteers. That's volunteers are there usually for the express purpose and.
And volunteers are, have the approval, at that point, the volunteer has the approval.
Yeah.
Work with students.
Yeah.
I watch our playground volunteer daily and that's, he is conferring with students. It's mostly.
You're considered a visitor for purpose of this, this policy?
Right, I don't think they are. That's a good point. I don't think they are a visitor at that point. They're a volunteer, they're part of it. So this would be, a visitor would be somebody who's come in for, well, I mean, to visit a class to.
I had two questions about. Is this, one, this, do we have a separate policy for like law enforcement, police being able, having, you know, necessary to ask any student or talk to a student or anything? Is that a separate?
We do have a separate policy about cooperation with law enforcement, yes. So, I mean, for law enforcement to meet with students in a building, they still have to go to the principal, but we will cooperate with.
And they're not considered a visitor, right?
No.
I guess, they may or may not. And I guess the other question was, do we, I, I assume we do have some sort of procedure or policy in place for things like, you know, restrictions on parent perhaps through child custody or things like that.
Oh, yes.
And that's a whole, is that a whole separate policy then?
Well, that's governed by the, you know, it's governed by law. So when we, when we get a, when there's a custody agreement that limits contact, you know, that the, the limit we have to that is that one parent or both parents have to provide that to us. They do, the principal has a copy of that and then by law to enforce that.
But, but that's, but Mr. Schur, that's a good example of where this could come into play. So let's just assume that somebody who's not a mother, a father, a parent, a guardian, comes into the school as a visitor and asks to have access to the student. That is just not something that we would do as, as a normal practice without, without some authorization or the parent. So this, this again, kind of supports this that, that we really haven't, in trying to follow existing law, existing policy and really trying to keep students safe.
Okay, thank, there's any questions I have on read through policy?
What is the military personnel section applied to recruiting?
I, I don't know why they would have put that in there. I don't know why.
Specific provision about them having to wear their military uniform while on district property?
I think it's, they're permitted to, they're, they're just permitted to.
Yeah, and I mean, it references policy 250, which is to, so that is the primary function of it.
It is recruitment.
Yeah, that's really why it's referenced, that's what policy 250 is, which is the reference. Reference number six under military personnel. And there is a part of the Pennsylvania law that prohibits limitations of wearing official merits. Like this is telling us that we can limit activity visitors. Well, it doesn't explicitly stay, we can tell them what they can wear, what they can't. There is a law that states that we cannot prevent military officials from wearing their uniforms in school. From 2010.
All right, all in favor of moving this for first reading? Um, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Does anyone on the committee have anything further for this evening? Do you have any questions from the public, Dr. Myers? Anyone in the face-to-face public have anything for us? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Hi, thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Myers, keep an eye out for Mr. Nolte, he should be joining the Zoom at some point. If he has not.
Has he joined us yet? As we're transitioning, do we have Mr. Nolte?
No, we have, I guess that we, that is a series of letters and numbers, so.
Said he was just on, so that must have. That's it, okay. Said he's joining again.
Can you guys hear me now, Christian?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Okay, yes, yes, perfect.
Okay, good. And then I know Dr. Ritter said he was not going to be here tonight, so I don't think we're waiting for anyone else at this point.
I think that's it.
All right, well, why don't we call tonight's facilities meeting to order? The first item of business that I have on my agenda is the Pub Mill Hudson area high school part. And I'm assuming Mr. Hoffman, you're here for that?
Correct.
So you have the floor.
Sure, thank you and good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here this evening. So I am coming here this evening to put forward a proposal to inquire about the acquisition of a pub mill for our ceramics program. A pub mill in itself is an extruder, or the simplest way it can make it seem, it recycles clay. It gives us the opportunity to recycle and never have to get rid of clay that's been in excess or stored in the classroom for year on end. There are other ways that we've tried to restore the clay in years past, but it's never optimal and it's often just has to be thrown out. Historically, we've brought in about, when we first started the program, when I came here now six, five and a half years ago, we were ordering around five to six pounds of clay a year. We're up to now almost 1,000 pounds of clay per semester. And we go through near all of it, but what that requires is that at the end of a semester, folks are throwing on the wheel, clay becomes too wet or plastic in our field, and it becomes unusable until it dries out or to the right consistency. So what this pub mill allows us to do is, like I said, recycle clay. Currently, we have close to 350 pounds of clay in my room that is just dry and rubble and can't be used without the ability to recycle in this. And it's as if you have brand new clay. So the optimal purchase for this also allows us to cut back on the expense of clay in the near future, offering our students recycled clay and having what I would, our fashion award, a standard in the ceramic world. So, and just to add to that, the reason for the piece of clay, 100 pounds a semester to nearly 1,000, our enrollment has dramatic, drastically increased. Back in the fall of 2016, 17, we had only six students. Now, to date, I'm having to close my door. I have too many students, nearly 24 to 30 COVID restricted, of course, and, you know, being mindful of that space. So it's a program that's continuing to grow. It's really exciting to see, not only for that classroom is growing as well, but the numbers and the excitement in this program. So if there are any questions that I can answer, I also share that I can share as well.
How much does the device cost and what exactly does it look like?
Certainly, if I'm able to offer some of this literature to anyone on the board, I have a few copies. It does come at a low cost of $7,500. And this also has those figures I was sharing with the number of players in order. And the class enrollment.
Is that same line you use when you're selling a piece of art, same low cost?
I, I trot. So there it is, the pub mill. It's approximately five and a half, six feet in length, about three feet from the floor, and weighs about 150 pounds. Actually, I think it's a little bit more, it goes through about 100 clay pounds per hour so that we can recycle that amount of clay. And it's something that is a, considered a de-erring pub mill, which allows not only the ability to recycle clay, but if you choose to, something we've done over the past two years is our students know how to make their own clay and glazes. So this would also do that using our own clay in our.
Does this piece of machinery have any safety concerns with it? Because who would be using it and who would be coming to contact?
Sure, currently this year, we do have a studio intern. She is doing a wonderful job and is actually someone who's been cleared to use not only the kiln as well as the laser in the classroom. So she's been cleared on those safety procedures, but I'll primarily be used by myself. If you see on the backside of the mill where there are two wheels, there's actually a casing over top of that, and there's an extruder or almost a metal wheel that spins. Primarily, even this is safe to use with students while operating around students, but that top is covered at all times and the clay simply goes into it. Think of it as a big fancy that you would not be able to put your hands into while it is running.
In a perfect world. Because I can see the warning sign with the hand, with, it looks like the fingers coming off the hand. And so I'm assuming that there is some kind of risk of someone getting their hand or some part of their body stuck in the machinery?
I believe that would be the case. I mean, arguably, there's that safety factor with any of the equipment that currently is in the classroom.
Right.
But I'd go over those safety protocols, even in the classroom, we have a 3,000 pound wheel for the clay, and it is a giant roller that you would use if you were spinning a wheel, and it's an entire press that the students know that truthfully you can have a finger lost or hurt in that scenario, but all the safety measures are certainly put into place with any of these equipment purchases or acquisitions in the classroom.
Is there, and you said there's a lid that goes over that?
That's correct. On that backside, it's a metal casing that simply covers the top of it. So at no point is the clay, you'll never see clay kind of pushing out the backside and then the front half is simply where the clay would come out as that perfect. you'll never see clay kind of pushing out the backside, and then the front half is simply where the clay would come out as that perfect recycled clay.
Is there like a safety mechanism where the machine isn't going to run unless the lid is closed?
I do believe so in this particular model, because this is considered a de-airing, so it needs to be shut for it to run.
Okay.
Just to remind me, getting the simple numbers of, you spend how much a year on clay currently?
Currently, oh, forgive me. We spend each, every 25 pounds is about $30.
Well, you have an estimated total savings of approximately $7,300 listed on the bottom of this one page. Is that for a year or what? That's total save for what period of time?
So this is in conjunction with a separate proposal that I was putting forward.
This is, that's a document that was used to communicate with Dr. Quinn about the curriculum budget in general curriculum.
Oh, that doesn't apply to this?
I was, yeah, if I can add to that, to side tangent, the two years ago, I'm definitely an over planner. I was kindly asked to propose a future years budget to say what would large items look like in the art program, and I gave Dr. Quinn a 10-year budget. And during those 10 years, we're looking at the potential act of a pub mill and multiple ceramic wheels. So in doing such, it was creating that savings over what I was reporting for a 10-year timeline.
Okay.
Are there any routine maintenance required on the pub mill?
At the end of every year, just like any of our other ceramic equipment, everything's pulled out, taken apart, washed down, simple routine maintenance cleaning and put back together, and that would only be done by myself. And then the last two pages of that document I shared with you are specific from Peter, which is the ideal brand in this scenario. I've certainly vetted other brands and but this is certainly one that teachers in the public school system have recommended and have been built to last.
Do you have as far as clay right now that would need to be rehabilitated, that you can't use it now?
Easily 350 pounds this year, and I can sadly say I threw out about 250 pounds at the end of last year.
So if you had 350 pounds of clay now, what would that?
I'd say we're in the ballpark of $250 or 250.
The savings would have to be more of a long-term?
Certainly, yeah.
Is there something within your department's budget right now that would allow, I mean, is there available funds now within the budget? The department's budget that would permit the purchase of this?
And because this is not structural, we were looking to build it in, you know, more of a capital purchase for next year. It's just, it's a piece of equipment that really will not be, you know, used for students. It's just about, now it does save long-term, it's going to save money that goes in the curriculum budgets. You can kind of look at it a few different ways there. I just think from, you know, the numbers you gave, you said for 25 pounds, it's $30. Is that correct? Flip that. Okay. You know, it's just, it's going to take for truly to pay for itself. It would take a little bit over 10 years, I think, but that's, it's a long-term investment into, you know, the program and being able to recycle that clay rather than throw it out. So it eliminates waste while with the expectation of it lasting 10 years for sure, right? I mean, that's, that's testimonial receiving. We'll eventually pay for itself, but it's a long term.
And if I can ask, excuse me, currently, we have three empty powder wheels, which are the standard powder wheels we've been using. We have three considered obsolete ones that we're no longer using, and looking to the future, we're expanding the wheel throwing, which kind of builds into the curriculum. Where in a 10-year budget, that was the goal, is to have 12 throwing wheels, which would be an ideal ceramic throwing program. Any towing with ceramics, that clay is much more moist and wet and un-dazed at length. So that also would provide students current more slab building and construction. So this kind of counterbalance ability to have clay readily available and at the right consistency.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Hoffman regarding the pub mill?
Okay. I mean, just Mr. Hoffman, as you can see, he, he puts the time, effort, energy, skill, and passion into growing the program from his side. That's why we see those numbers that, you know, that are climbing in the classes. It's a direct result of the work that his colleagues do at the younger grades, but very specifically, Mr. Hoffman, this is the investment on the material side to help grow in a direction that, that he sees as a area of growth over the next few years.
And then, so at this point, if there's no other questions, I'd be looking for a motion from the committee that would allow this to move forward. As something to be considered for the board as a whole to vote on?
I'll move to, I'll make a motion to move it forward, Randy.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. Wait for somebody to make a second.
I'll second.
So with a motion and a second, Carl, I'm assuming since you made the motion, you're in favor. So from here with the committee members in the, in the, in the room, I'll just say show of hands. So it looks like we have committee approval. We can put this on the board agenda if the next available time for the. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate all that you do for the art department. You do a great job.
Thank you.
Then the next item is the Miller flooring refinishing.
Yep. So per your handout, I have the two quotes from Miller Flooring. This is a company that's been doing it the past several years, and for Mr. Yap Suga has asked me to continue with this company. They're very happy with them. So, Mr. Nolte, for the whole, the amount is $5,152.21. And for the middle school, it is $3,337.22. The difference is the high school uses a water-based finish, and the middle school uses a older oil-based finish, because that was what originally was on, on that floor.
It seems about what we spend every year, I believe, Richard, correct?
Yes, it's exactly the same price as last year that was quoted.
Okay.
And then, I mean, this is money well spent to maintain and keep the floor in good condition. Keep it so it's safe for students to use the abilities. How is the high school gym floor holding up? Because was it a year we had some issues with the flooring holding? Has, has that been?
Yeah, I don't, there have not been any additional issues. That I think we traced back to a some project where.
The type of cleaning product that was used. So that, that's been corrected, and we haven't had any further problems then?
I believe there's been any problems with the gym floor.
Does it have any other questions for Richard regarding the, the flooring? If not, I'll look for a motion for, to have the board approve the defense, consider approving this expense. Motion by Michelle, second?
I'll, I'll second it, Randy.
Okay, with that being the case, all in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that looks like that is approved and can be placed on the agenda for the board to consult. Next item is seal coating at Quitts Town Elementary, Quitts Town Middle School, and Greenwich Elementary Playground only.
Yeah, so at the high school and elementary, we're paving both parking lots in an attempt to further the current parking lots and playground areas at both Quitts School and Quitts Town Elementary. I've gotten quotes and restrike everything for those two buildings, as well as the playground, which is around the backside of Greenwich Elementary School. I had five companies come out and give quotes. I had four that actually gave us numbers with Martelli striping giving us the best price. They've done work for us in the district before, and there also will be the ones that will be striping or are paving on the other, other two buildings that will be paving. So all our striping will be the same color, toxicity, and splits. So for Quitts Town Middle School, the Martelli quoted $19,166. Quitts Town Elementary is $18,188, and Greenwich $2,972.
Given the cost on these, are there certain requirements we have to go through in order to get bids and things before we would vote to approve?
Martelli numbers are all under that bidding.
What is that threshold?
$20,600 there? $20,300.
Okay. It's right around the $20,000 mark.
So we're considering this as three separate jobs then?
Correct.
Richard, I'm sorry, help me out again. What, what is the scope? This is relining the, the parking lots and the, and the playgrounds? This is after the paving?
No, Mr. Nolte, this is for the buildings that we are not paving. This is for the two buildings, Quitts Town Elementary and Quitts Town Middle School. It's to seal coat, you know, crack fill and seal coat the existing parking lots and playgrounds.
So it's a complete coating, not, not just, not just a crack fill? I mean, you'll actually have a black seal coat over the whole, the whole parking lot?
That's correct.
And then striping afterwards?
Correct. And that's all the playground equipment, all the buddy circles, the, everything except the flag, the United States flag that is at the elementary school. Dale Bond and his crew will be doing that over the summer.
How many years do you think it's been since we did this?
I, I'm not sure. Don.
Okay, that's what I thought.
With the McClure project, we're redoing the high school parking lot completely. I thought we were, though, doing some paving at some of the other buildings.
Yeah, so Greenwich Elementary will have the entire parking lot paved as well. And then also here at Quitts Town Middle, Middle School, we will make an additional driveline from where it ends around and then to the back of the boiler room. So this is, this is going to be the seal coating everywhere we are not paving.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, Richard, what was it? What's the total about? I'm sorry, what's the total? Like all three together? Roughly, just roughly, I just want to ask Dave, are we okay on money, Dave, in our capital budget for this?
Roughly 40, 41, 42,000.
Yeah, we have, we have money in our capital fund.
And anything that you guys, Richard or Dave, would see that for the rest of the year that would, how much money is left in the capital fund and how much does this affect it? Is there anything that, that's more pressing, Dave?
Well, we certainly have enough money in there to, to do this. As far as something being more pressing, I don't really know that. I don't know of anything that's more pressing.
Okay.
And just, just, there's a couple of things that had come up and was approached was the grinding blocks, but I just got a quote on that. That wasn't ready to be presented this evening, but that's for trip hazards across the district. That's had variable stages. I was informed that, you know, anything over a quarter inch lip across the sidewalk should be, should be handled. That's something that Mr. Miller and I need to go back and with our insurance company and just review that quote. So that, that could be a potential large, large item to add.
With the middle school in Quitts Town Elementary, the areas that you're looking to seal coat, what is the addition of those areas now? And basically what I'm trying to ask is, is the seal coat a sufficient repair to restore and keep those paved areas in good condition? Or are they in bad condition that some other type of repair actually might be needed?
Quitts Town Middle School is in good shape, a very good candidate. There's one or two small areas at Quitts Town Elementary that are potentially questionable, but we felt it was not wise enough to do, especially in the fall when we were looking at them, to do a complete repave. So we felt this was a, a more cost-effective option and hopefully get us at the middle school five years down the road.
Okay. Does anyone else on the committee have any more questions regarding the seal code?
No, I don't. You said you had five companies in Richard, so quite, quite an array of, for, for bids?
Yes, we invited five companies. We got four different bids. And again, the company that we've used prior to doing work in the district before, Martelli, Martelli sign, Martelli striping came in with the lowest bid.
The Martelli actually looks to be significantly lower than the others. The highest one is close to $60,000, it looks like. From RH, then there's another one from Miller. They did not bid for GE though?
No, did not.
They, was it too small that they didn't want to be bothered with it, or why didn't they bid that part?
Not, not sure.
But they basically bid 21,390 each for both KMS and KES, did not the GES part of the, of the job. SNG is the third one that bid. And there, there's looks to be close to 50,000 or more total with the Martelli one being the low four that are there, Carl.
Thanks, Paul. I, I mean, I'll move to take this to the board for a vote.
Okay. Second, so we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor can, with the, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So that can move forward for consideration of the board as a whole. Next item on the agenda is HBAC. Next item on the agenda is HVAC, a preventative maintenance contract.
Yes, so the first top page of this contract is currently in effect, which goes until February, I believe, February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. So that's the top page, that's our current rates. What has not been added was any of our internal terminal devices, which is most of the unit vents and fan coils that are in the buildings inside the buildings. I'm understanding that those have not been maintained from a preventive maintenance side for several years, just discovering that. So this is a proposal to look at that. That was done internally prior to, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, the gentleman who was here before in the maintenance department in that position was not replaced. So.
No.
No, you're talking Gordy, aren't you?
So this is a, this is a proposal for the, the two times for twenty twenty-one only, just since we're not replacing any of this equipment to make sure that maintenance is done when we're up and rolling with our new HVAC rooftop units, chillers. Again, that's the total on the second page of thirty-three thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah. With the work done with McClure, are they working with Burns Mechanical or is that a different group that's going to be installing the chillers and the HVAC upgrades that we are going to do with that project?
Recently, this, earlier this year, Burns Mechanical was bought by Southland and is no longer under the McClure umbrella. So this is a separate company. This is Burns. It didn't really affect our preventative maintenance program since it was with Burns prior to that. This is all the internal components called turn equipment is inside the building. None of this will be replaced. That's why I'm concerned that this is on the preventive maintenance, at least for this, this coming year, to make sure it's all up to par before all the other, the outside replacement equipment is done.
What was the existing contract, the total?
It's that top page. I don't have.
The base price?
It's base plus the chillers plus the condensers. We're at seventeen ninety for that. That's all, again, rooftop units. The reason why interior is expensive from the cost of that there's a unit in every room and sometimes multiple units in every room. For instance, the band room in this particular building has two or three locations with fan coils in the ceiling, which are actually hidden underneath the ceiling tile. So that's why it's fairly labor intensive and that's why the middle school is actually a higher price than the elementary or the high school.
And now for the inspections is that you'll receive, you'll receive a report as an output of these inspections that you can then plan for future replacement or whatever it may be. They'll provide that recommendation through the inspection process?
Yeah, anytime they're doing inspection, they're giving us an immediate feedback and generally this, no, of course, that comes in an additional charge if there's any, anything, but yes. And then as well, we're trying to get a new work order that has a inventory asset program that we can actually have that recorded. And one of the things we're working on, it can be used by the vendor. So that vendor, when they're servicing the equipment, can enter data into our database.
When I add the three numbers up for the base pricing, that only comes up to around eight thousand dollars.
On the first page.
On the first page, right. What's different that it's now going to be almost double that or not quite?
So this first page is exterior unit. So it's the three chillers. It's the, all the rooftop units, which in the whole, it's probably twenty, twenty plus. I don't have the list of every piece of equipment, but as I said, the second page is every single in all five buildings. So I said, those have not had any attention since that gentleman has no longer been employed.
So in terms of the first page then, is if we're if we're replacing all the rooftop units, would they come in and do that maintenance the second half of the year? If it's twice a year, like based on them replacing the rooftop chillers and everything over the summer, are we still having that annual inspection, the biannual inspection occurring later in the year then as well?
They've said they would work with us and again, when it's getting replaced, so we're not doing a maintenance, you know, two days.
On new, on new equipment.
Right, two days before they rip the equipment off.
Right.
But this contract again was existing. It was signed in two thousand nineteen. So again, without the vision of that, but they would work with us on around that equipment also.
So when would they, being that it would be every room in every building, when would they actually be doing the inspections? Logistically, how would this be done?
We're currently doing it now on the, on the first page. Generally, we start by then the school day. So they get two or three per day or more. Also, when classrooms are vacant, they're going into those and getting those done. That's primarily what we've been doing now.
So, Richard, this must be something you support, right?
Completely, yes. And.
So this is not at all expense. This is going to have to come out of the general fund budget because it's maintenance. I mean, is that something that's going to be able to be absorbed into your maintenance budget?
I hope to take this back on internally, but I really would like to get this done as soon as possible before the original, before the other items get, you know, replaced.
Are you saying absorbed in the future or even this year within the budget? Okay, you're talking about in the future.
Well, this is maintenance, so it's really not something that should come out of the construction fund.
Right, I just, were you asking, I thought you were asking if this is something that would be a part of the maintenance budget for next year or future years or if you're asking?
Yeah, this year and future years.
So this is something that requesting for this year to kind of, you know, to get equipment up to best possible working condition for the renovations and so on, and then looking to transition it to an internal operation going forward.
Yes, I don't, I think we can take this back in-house, similar to what it was done in the past.
Okay.
But my recommendation is we, at least, and again, this is still just a proposal from them. We could potentially have them do it once instead of, this is saying twice a year, you know, again, just to have them do it that we can get up and running to make sure all the terminal equipment inside all our buildings is up to par.
Okay, because obviously that's a lot of money every year.
I mean, I suppose that question, the question of would twice a year, you know, provide, just provides half the benefit, I guess, that's the reality.
You know, like anything, you know, how often do you catch something? So I know I think once is better than none. That's kind of where I'm coming from right now. This is just what, you know, they actually had a proposal for four times a year, you know, that they do quarterly. Some companies do quarterly. So she was just basing off what, you know, I had asked for twice a year because that's what they do currently for our rooftop units and chillers is twice a year maintenance or preventative maintenance. And Mr. Nolte, I just emailed the sheet that we're comparing.
Okay. The quarterly price is the same as annually. I'm a little confused. Right, just eight thousand three forty-five times four? Or am I looking at the wrong thing?
That just splits up. That's how we get billed. We get billed quarterly.
Okay, but it's still just for the maintenance being done twice per year?
Yes, even though we're getting twice till us quarterly and that's how it's currently done. Dave, Mr. Miller, could you answer why quarterly or why they bill us? Is it just their procedure?
No, this is the, I guess that's just the way they do it.
Did we seek other bids?
No, I did not. This is the company that we've had, the current one. This is prior to myself. They are co-stars, so we do not have to. We can very well go out for that.
But these folks are familiar with our equipment.
Yeah, Burns is very familiar with our equipment. Currently, a Burns personnel is using the side office, Weaver's office. That's how you access the roof.
I saw them at GES the other morning.
Yep.
Yes, Burns is very responsive when we do have a problem on many things. I mean, generally, we have somebody always day, sometimes the same day. So we pull people from their Allentown office as well as their Philadelphia office.
And where does the thing stand with that's budget for the rest of this year? So like, because if we approve this, this would come out of the budget, out of the maintenance budget?
Our maintenance budget here is very well spent, very much spent, I should say.
You know, and that's, what's spent is not, you know, we spent a lot of money this year because of COVID things that we do have grant funding to pay for. This also could be something that we pay for through grant funding. At this point, for this year and for the future three years, it's really just about prioritizing deciding what we apply a revenue from, from the grant funding at any given year. I mean, theoretically, we could spend this money for the service contract this year and add to the revenue by the equivalent amount from the grant funding into the application. I guess when the money is kind of a different story depending on the funding system, but.
I was sitting here thinking that it would be grant money.
Yeah, it definitely can. HVAC is definitely a part of that, as is anything else. It's just, you know, we're developing a larger strategy as to what the grant funding, some clarification weekend about funding and what it needs to be spent on. That we're going to have a little bit more of the next few weeks, but this certainly can buy. So we overspent our maintenance budget because we would, we needed to this year. We did things that we'd never really been previously.
Correct. Well, the necessity of it is one thing, but making sure you can pay for it in the budget is another. That was more what my question was geared towards.
We can pay for it this year. It's something that we would not want to sustain beyond a few years because we would, we'd want to take that in-house as we see that funding.
Yeah, we certainly have grant money to pay for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's not, that's not looking at it as coming out of the maintenance budget then. That's looking at it as coming out of grant money.
Okay. Any other?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to move forward if we're going to use the grant money to pay for it.
Okay, so we have the motion, a second? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So that can go forward with the committee's recommendation for the board to consider for that expense. And then the last item we had is the fence at the Greenwich Elementary School.
So this is revisiting our securities concerns that we just discussed back the end of last year. The fence quote was fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars at that. As you can see, just, I just checked with them as late as today. They had at least an eighteen percent increase on materials roughly, roughly is about eight hundred dollars. They said they would not give me an exact dollar amount until we fully commit. They said vendor is holding them to a five-day price point. So anything with a, you know, down payment, they said their vendor is very volatile with their fence purchase. I did take this out to several different companies, found out one does not do chain link fence. One had, one was actually by Pro Max Fence in the time that I got the original quotes. So that was Nolan Boyd. And then another company that actually did the work around the propane also chose not to give it any quotes for that. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
This fencing, is it around the border of the property or where would it be?
It's around the basin. It's about a, again, four foot high fence. It kind of surrounds their playground area and it's in rough shape. Several of the posts have rotten off. It's a split, currently, it's a split rail fence with metal wire nailed to it. So we're looking to improve that as well as the look. So that it would be a vinyl coated of our choosing the color, whether we choose a green. I mean, there's several different colors if we went that direction. There was just a quote why they were on site because we had heard different things that a, the rudders might be going in at that location. They were just trying prices on potential secure, you know, additional perimeter fencing at that time. That's that perimeter fence that would be line the north side of the property. That is not on there since, you know, nothing has moved forward with that. That was also just to give, see if we chose to go in that direction. Something, you know, was going in.
I guess for me, the same question kind of comes to mind in terms of budget and where the wood.
This would be a capital expense. It's a new piece of fencing. Something that that would come down to with capital budget has it. The fence is going to fall down eventually if it's not if it's half fallen down now. So it's a matter of replacing now or place later. Dave, thoughts on the budgeting piece of fence at this point?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Just the fence would be a capital expense.
Yes, it would.
So as far as the, you know, health of the current capital budget that the capital budget was supported for this year.
Yes.
Sorry again, but how I know they said they wouldn't give you a direct price, Richard, but what's the ballpark number?
An additional eight hundred dollars on top of that being doing now.
How much was the base? I'm sorry.
At fourteen five fifty three.
So, okay.
About fifteen three fifteen five they would be at now, Carl, based on that estimate.
And if you see down on the bottom, they actually add due to the current volatility of certain materials. This proposal may be withdrawn after fourteen. They said that number is now down to five, just to give us, you know, an accurate number. So.
What is so volatile about a chain link fence?
I think it's a supply and demand for everything. It's, you know, I don't know.
Lumber is through the roof right now. Like, so they're probably filling the same impact cost.
Yeah, their labor is it's the material. It's not their labor has is not changed.
I've seen residential items where if you order something now, it's twenty five percent more than preordered at six weeks from now. It's sign to man.
There's a just FYI on Johnson Controls. All the bills that in the past year have had a PPE surcharge.
What's? Yeah, there was supposed to be legislation to prevent that kind of stuff in my.
Nine thousand four hundred and thirteen dollar figure that's right there. What's?
That's the total of both, Mr. Birch.
Oh, got it. Okay. So what would happen if they come in drastically higher than the say fifteen five? Do we have an option to refuse that then at this point?
Well, we have nothing signed. I mean, we can come back with a limit, but again, they're we could definitely ask of where they are and get them. Once we get locked into a a price, I can get the next quote. You know, of where we are. They're just saying that their vendor where they buy their materials from is at a five day, you know, price hole, you know, as far as they they won't lock them in for any more than five days.
Okay.
So I can get an updated those are to a meeting. So you can have an exact if if there's if this gets put on the agenda, I can get a closer number or exact day of the vote. Or we could give an approval not to exceed. Of course, if they go in higher than that, then we're not going to be able to go forward. Now, that's the thing. And obviously eighteen percent since, you know, October, you know, he didn't feel it was going to be that much more on the temperature that I got from him today, but.
Do you think the the pricing will level off as we get through the summer? Or is this something that's gonna?
He did not have.
Stay as far as this kind of pricing.
He had no idea. Sorry, I meant again, he said eighteen and I don't know what's going. Again, they're relying on their on their vendor that they're buying supplies from.
Okay.
I'll say just in general, I've heard from friends that are in landscaping, they're booked through next year already, like people are just focusing on like so that that demand is there. From what I'm hearing, I think that's going away anytime soon.
Okay. So any other questions regarding the the fence at GES? And if not, look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
So Michelle made the motion a second.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second favor can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we can move forward with that then as well. And then everything that was on my agenda, was there anything added on?
Nothing truly added on to the agenda, just the sort of an update. We have the McClure with the McClure project, you know, we are moving along. Certainly don't have a schedule yet. We have a contract that will need to be signed. We're reviewing that currently for the details. Richard had a meeting with John. John Gunning was up here for you. Some of the questions he had. One question we still have to flush out specifically to the auditorium, and it's one that will be very front facing public facing is the within the contract, they had the removal and replacement of the wood entrance. And that's something we had not discussed at all previously. Not to say that should or shouldn't. It's just not something we had discussed. So I mean, as a meeting internally to have a conversation about that with the project manager. What the, you know, best laid plans are for that. I don't know if there's any thought. I mean, the committee's welcome to come out as far as as you enter the building and the auditorium, there is wood structure around the edge. Their contract had removal and replacement of that. But again, it's just something we had never discussed.
We discussed the doors.
The doors, yes.
So this is actually the framing.
Is the framing that kind of wraps partly partially around the whole entrance. So. And if anybody has a strong feeling one way or the other on that. It's a character of the auditorium that certainly you think about when you enter. So it provides some of the historical. Now, the question somewhat to me is what what will it look like when things are refurbished? Will it look like dated because of that? Or would it look have a unique look because the wood maintains with a freshened auditorium? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, what would they replace it with?
Not a hundred. You might know more than I do at this point because you have that meeting on Friday.
You know, just saying that in the contract, it just calls out that it replaced with sheet rock and painted. Which is obviously, you know, you can think of sheet rock and painted plain, or you can do a lot of other things. You know, again, with what Mr. Hoffman has done in the hallway, you know, he's very creative. Now, again, as Mr. Tim Chatton said, that theme is carried out as soon as you step in the auditorium doors from the outside as well, all through the auditorium. So again, it's like the ice cream store. Everybody has a little bit different taste. So that's the best way to kind of say, do we want to carry that? And we're going to meet said internally and go from there.
Do they have any like graphic renditions of like what this is all going to look like?
That's what we're asking for. That's what I asked for several weeks ago. And that's why we're having a meeting internally at McClure is having a what they call a transition. So they had an engineer that helped design the work and now a pro project manager who will be seeing that the project through. So that transition just happened on Thursday. And now again, we'll be meeting with that perfectly as well as the handoffs on Wednesday to sit down, go through those questions, those again, what will this look like? And hopefully come back to you with some a little bit more drawings. We do have some. The other thing that was was gone with talked about lead times on this project is that the the seats have been ordered without a signed contract because of the lead long lead. So they gave us the benefit of the doubt on that. Also, I spoke to the roofer today.
In relation to that meeting with the seating company, there is a possibility that the seating in the LGI room specifically won't be done until mid September somehow. So we might and that that won't cause a major issue for the the building, but just based on the projected lead time for the seats to come in. Possibility we could without the LGIs done. So.
Without what?
The LGI rooms, but they would be completed in September and and there's space in the high school to maneuver people where necessary, if that's the case.
Yes. And then the I said with the roofer, they actually did the same thing because of the long lead times. They've also gone ahead and committed to the order already of materials from what they've already experiencing. So hopefully, you know, that will not hold up anything since they've got that in the works.
Well, everything's been approved at this point, except for.
Yes, we just don't have a sign.
We just didn't sign the contract.
Okay. Okay. Was there anything else with regard to the McClure update?
No, that's it.
Other than Mr. Nolte, do we? Is there anyone else zooming with us? Okay, so with that, it doesn't look like there would be anyone here for public comment. I would at this point be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Second, a favor, aye?
Aye.
That's it for tonight.